You motion for to go in? And then, I don't know the second.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the September 10th work session for the Newton County Board of Education. Called a meeting to order at 7:03 PM. Would you please join me for a moment of silence? Thank you, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Superintendent Fury, we have special recognition.
We do indeed. Good evening. Tonight, we have several students who deserve to be recognized for their recent accomplishments. All the students here this evening have earned national recognition by being named a 2019 AP Scholar by the College Board. Overall, 111 Newton County School System high school students were named AP Scholars for their outstanding success on their AP exams last school year. While many of those were graduates of the class of 2019, we had a record number of sophomores and juniors earn this prestigious recognition as well. So many, in fact, that we have must have, we've had to spread the recognition out over three meetings to accommodate all of our students. And that's not a bad problem to have. Tonight, we will recognize those returning students who attained AP Scholar with Distinction and AP Scholar with Honor status. First, I'd like to recognize those students who attained AP Scholar with Distinction status. In order to qualify for the AP Scholar with Distinction Award, students must earn an average score of at least 3.5 on all AP exams taken and scores of three or higher on five or more of these exams. Students, when I call your name, please come forward to accept your certificate of recognition from Mrs. Shaquilla Henderson Baker, our Board Chair. Simon Jenkins. Simon is a senior at Alcoa High School and he was named a 2019 AP Scholar with Distinction. Congratulations, Simon. Scott Everett. We can clap after. Scott is a senior at the Academy of Liberal Arts at Newton High School and he earned AP Scholar with Distinction status in 2019. Congratulations, Scott. Braxton Buff. Braxton is a senior at Eastside High School and he was named a 2019 AP Scholar with Distinction. Congratulations, Braxton. Mia Busby. Mia is a senior at Eastside High School and she was named a 2019 AP Scholar with Distinction. Congratulations, Mia. Crighton Gerner. Crighton is a 12th grade student at Eastside High School and he was named a 2019 AP Scholar with Distinction. Congratulations, Crighton. Ethan Shu. Ethan is a senior at Eastside High School and he is a 2019 AP Scholar with Distinction as well. Congratulations, Ethan. And if we could, congratulate all of our AP Scholars with Distinction one more time. Now, I'd like to recognize our 2019 AP Scholars with Honor. In order to qualify for the AP Scholar with Honor Distinction, students must earn an average score of at least 3.25 on all AP exams taken and scores of three or higher on four or more of the exams. Students, when I call your name, please come forward to accept your certificate of recognition from Mrs. Henderson Baker. Eliana Lewis. Eliana is a senior at the Academy of Liberal Arts at Newton High School and she was named a 2019 AP Scholar with Honor. Congratulations, Eliana. Jacob Snyder. Jacob is a senior at the Academy of Liberal Arts at Newton High School and he is a 2019 AP Scholar with Honor. Congratulations, Jacob. Jack Atkinson. Jack is a senior at Eastside High School and the Newton College and Career Academy STEM Institute and he too is a 2019 AP Scholar with Honor. Congratulations, Jack. Jet Dong. Jet is a senior at Eastside High School and he was named a 2019 AP Scholar with Honor. Congratulations, Jet. Lucas Harper. Lucas is a senior at Eastside High School as well and he was named a 2019 AP Scholar with Honor. Congratulations, Lucas. Sophia Holly. She's not here, but I'd like to recognize her in her absence. Sophia is a senior at Eastside High School and she earned AP Scholar with Honor status for 2019. Congratulations, Sophia. Ally Hay. Ally is a senior at Eastside High School and she was named a 2019 AP Scholar with Honor. Congratulations, Ally. Johanna Pestle. Johanna is a senior at Eastside High School and she was named a 2019 AP Scholar with Honor. Congratulations, Johanna. Sarah Schleter. And she is at band practice, so I'd like to recognize her as well. Sarah is a senior at Eastside High School and she was named a 2019 AP Scholar with Honor. Congratulations to Sarah. And I would like to take this moment to recognize each of our AP Scholars with Honor just one more time with a round of applause. Students, I don't know how many AP classes you have taken, but to be in this category of students, to be recognized, you have participated in quite a number of them. You are, I'm absolutely amazed at your talent and ability. You are very, very bright young people and looking forward to the kinds of things that you will accomplish after you graduate from high school and take on college or whatever you face beyond high school. I have, I am a former AP student as well and I know the kind of work and expectation that comes along with participating in these courses. So, it really is a distinct honor for you to have been recognized by the College Board. So, congratulations from me and the administration and all the teachers who have played a role and administrators who have played a role in your work as you, as you're being recognized tonight. With that, I'd like to thank our school administrators who are here this evening because without their support and setting the conditions at each school so that we have these wonderful AP classes, it would not be possible. So, thank you administrators for being here this evening. And with that being said, Ms. Henderson Baker, we are concluding our recognition this evening.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Congratulations to the students again. I'd like for the family of the students to all stand. Thank you for the work that you have done with supporting your students, pushing them to take rigorous classes. And obviously, it works because they're achievers, they're here tonight for the successes that they have achieved. Students, I would like to congratulate you again and to keep up and encourage you to keep up the work. With that being said, because you guys are academically sound and very studious students, if you would like to be dismissed, to go home and study and finish your homework, you may leave at this time. However you want to stay, you are more than welcome to. Okay, I do not think we have any public participation. Okay, thank you. May I have approval of the agenda, please?
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda.
Okay.
To go back into executive, excuse me, executive session prior to item F.
Okay. Ms. Coggan, you just have to state the reason why for me.
For personnel.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. So, we have, Ms. Coggan has proposed to amend the agenda to go back into executive session for the purpose of personnel. Is there a second on the floor?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll go back into executive session when we get to F. Thank you. Okay. Approval of the minutes, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Superintendent's reports.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Superintendent, members of the Board. Good to see you in this room this evening. The September financial report, the special purpose local option sales tax for education distribution for July was $1,256,254, which is an increase of $75,376 from the previous month. The average for the first 54 months of SPOLOX collections was $991,262. For comparison purposes, the monthly average for SPOLOX III was $881,483. The title Advolorum Tax Collection for July was $88,084. Also, salary and benefits for August for 10-month employees, as you know, are accrued into fiscal year 2019 as these payments are worked, are for work during the 2018-19 school year. The October ending fund balance will be available for you in October. And finally, the complete financial statement is there for your review. And that concludes the financial report.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Barr. Any questions on A? Okay, B?
Good evening.
Good evening.
The superintendent's report, I am going to begin with student achievement and success and just pull one item from each of the four areas. Corrective reading is a comprehensive district instruction reading intervention program for advancing students' reading abilities. Teachers provide intensive reading intervention for students in grades three through eight using age-appropriate materials. All students have been tested and placed in a corrective reading class at Clements, Cousins, Indian Creek, Liberty and Veterans Middle Schools. The students were assessed using the corrective reading placement test and classes were scheduled accordingly at each school. And let me correct that, it says grades three through eight, but it's actually grades six through eight. Moving on to high-quality workforce, elementary teachers participated in district-wide professional learning on August 23rd, which was an early release day. Kindergarten through second grade teachers met at Flint Hill Elementary School while third grade through fifth grade teachers met at South Salem Elementary School. Gifted teachers, paraprofessionals and special education teachers attended the training in the location that best met their needs while special education, special area teachers met together in various locations. Staff was able to choose two sessions that would meet their professional learning needs. Based on the survey following the event, the professional learning was well received. One teacher wrote, and I quote, "This was some of the most beneficial training that I have received on a half-day planning. I was taught information that I could use in my classroom. I also liked that I was able to pick my own classes. This helped me to select sessions that would help me to improve areas in my teaching classroom," end quote. Culture, climate and communication Title I staff, whose salaries are funded using Title I funds, participated in an informational workshop to provide support with the implementation of the Title I program. The training focused on interactions with students in a school-wide program to help them achieve high academic state standards. Title I personnel provide services that are supplemental to what the district is providing for every student and school. And finally, under organizational and operational effectiveness, in August, Darren Berry, Director of Student Services and other law enforcement personnel, visited two middle schools to conduct risk assessments and safety audits. Subsequently, meetings were held with the school's administrative teams to debrief and discuss lockdown drills and safety readiness. That concludes that portion of the superintendent's report. I will now move on to the enrollment report. As of, I'm sorry, yes, ma'am?
Can you give me a second to see if anybody has?
Oh, I'm sorry, you know, because you know typically I forget to do the enrollment reports, so I was trying to make sure I didn't forget.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Roundtree? Okay, you can go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Henderson Baker. As of September 5th, 2019, there are 19,618 students enrolled, which is 128 students less than last year at this time. And that is the enrollment report.
Thank you kindly, sir. Any questions on enrollment? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have a presentation?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Superintendent Fury.
Good morning. Good evening. Good morning.
Here to share with you the 2018-19 program results for 21st Century. And as this comes up, throughout the presentation, there are going to be photos there, so enjoy some of the activities that our students were, took part in this year. So, just a reminder of our strategic plan, all that we do with 21st Century, of course, is in alignment with our district strategic plan. And this is our target group, students that we target particularly for the 21st Century program. We're looking at students who did not meet standards on the state test, we're looking at students who are in need of remediation or credit recovery, students who may have been retained due to academics or attendance, and then other at-risk factors that they may exhibit. And then finally, we focus on our families. So, here are the demographics. We have five 21st, or we had five 21st Century grants, and so each is represented here in the boxes. Our first grant is ASAP I, which is made up of Portidale Elementary, Newton High School and Middle Ridge Elementary. Each one of our grants, we were targeted to serve 150 students. And so here are the demographics of the students that we served. We served 200 students and 170 of those were regular attendees. A regular attendee is a student that attended the program 30 or more days. You can see how we were broken down by male, female, and then 91.8% of those students were classified as free, qualified for free reduced lunch. The second one is ASAP II, which is made up of West Newton, Indian Creek and Washington Street Community Center. We served 246 students there and 169 of those were regular attendees and then 90.5% of those were on free reduced lunch. Our third grant is ASAP III, which is Fairview, Flint Hill, and Eastside High School. 259 students served, 186 of those were regular attendees. And then ASAP V was Alcoa, Clements and Liberty Middle School. 272 served, 208 of those were regular attendees. And then the final grant was ASAP VI, and that is Cousins, Heard, Nixon and Veterans. 250 students served, 185 of those were regular attendees. So, here are our program activities. We offer remediation, tutoring, credit recovery, homework assistance, all of that is focused on our academic areas. The second one is our character education, prevention, education and leadership, looking at those appropriate behaviors and work habits there. And then we offer a variety of enrichment classes as well as field trips. And then finally, we offer to the parents, parent education class, volunteer opportunities and parent involvement opportunities. So, here are our results and we have four main goals with the 21st Century program. Our first goal is an academic goal, is to improve the academic performance of students in reading, English Language Arts, math and science. So, our measurable objectives for this particular goal, we're looking at grades, we're looking at test scores here. And so, the first objective looks at the states, the scores on the state test in reading in English Language Arts. And so, each one of our grants are represented there. And so, as you can see for that particular objective, each one of our grants met the objective. Our second one looks at grades in reading, English Language Arts, and we met the objectives for each of our grants for that particular one. 1.3 looks at the state scores on the test in math, and for each one of our grants, we met the objective there. 1.4 looks at our grades in math and we met, each one of our grants met the objective. 1.5, we were looking at our scores in science on the state test and ASAP II fell short there. The other grants met the objective. 1.6 is looking at their science grades and for each of our grants, we met the objective. 1.7, we were looking at credit recovery for our high school students. And as you can see, our high school students did very well. All of our students successfully recovered their credits. So, we're very happy to present that we have, to report that we have 100% of our students that completed that objective for all three high schools. Our second goal is to develop responsibility, appropriate behavior, work habits that contribute to academic success. So, these scores are measured by our day teacher surveys. So, our day teachers are given a survey and they are to report to our program how they feel the students have done as a result of being a part of the program. 2.1 is looking at their homework completion and the, and if it's acceptable for the teachers. And so, as you can see there, each one of our grants met the objective. 2.2, we're looking at their participation in class, so we feel like they should be participating better once they're on track and doing well. And so, our teachers are saying, yes, they are participating better. 2.3 is looking at behavior and there we have good reporting from our day teachers on their behavior. Our third girl, our third goal is looking at the enrichment piece, to provide students with opportunities to participate in a variety of enrichment activities, including the arts, career exploration, recreation and fitness. So, this one we measure with the students. We give the students a survey and we say to them, we need your feedback, tell us if we are offering these things appropriately or to your meeting. 3.1, we wanted to see them report an increased appreciation of enrichment activities, physical activity, career activities. And so, our students reported that we were doing very well in that area. So, we met the objective for each one of those grants. 3.2, we're looking at the field trips and again, the students reported that we have met all of what they were expecting there for the field trips. Our final goal is to provide families with support services to improve community literacy and to assist them in supporting their children's educational endeavors. So, 4.1 through 4.3, we are looking at the parents' attendance at our events, we're looking at if they're coming to volunteer, and then we're also giving them a survey so that they can give us their feedback on if the activities that we offer them meets their needs. And as you can see, for each one of those objectives, we met all of those objectives for each one of the grants. And finally, here are a few recommendations by our evaluator. This report was prepared by Dr. Mike, Michael Metzler, who is a retired professor from Georgia State University. His recommendations were to increase focus on science instruction, to integrate academic content with physical activity and physical fitness, to continue to explore alternative scheduling and to continue use of active, hands-on and group-based learning. And that is it. Do I have any questions?
Ms. Samms, I want to commend you for presenting this and it looks great, only one not met. And I really liked the next to the last slide where you had the students at Fort Valley State University. But very good, especially the parent part because I remember years back that parent part, getting the parents engaged and to participate on their side was hard and we had a couple not met, mets in those categories.
Yes.
So, good job.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Yeah, a couple, just real quick ones. Just the, one of the recommendations was alternative scheduling. What in the world is that?
Just changing, just changing up your schedule so that it's just not repetitive, so that, so every nine weeks, they want to see different activities offered within the schedule.
So, it's not like a different day of the week or anything?
No, 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 no.
Like on Saturday or whatever. All right. And I noticed we, it's like 14 or so schools represented and so we're missing eight or 10 or so. And I noticed that those grants ran out in June, the first two or three.
Yes.
Have we already reapplied or we approved?
We have, we reapplied for ASAP I, II and III. We successfully were awarded ASAP II and III. We did not get ASAP I.
Oh, okay.
And that's Newton High, Middle Ridge and Portidale.
So, what is our plan?
To reapply.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, if they do an RFP this year, we will reapply.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. We do not have any old business, we're going to move on to new business. We have two items that will need approval tonight, E, and then we'll go back into executive session and come back out to approve F. Item A, Dr. Thomas.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The superintendent recommends the approval of the attached 180-day student calendar and 190-day teacher calendar. Details, all employees, parents and community members in the district were given an opportunity to participate in an online survey allowing for a review of two options for the 2020-2021 school calendar. Each calendar option reflects 190 teacher days and 180 student days. School system employees were sent an email explaining the calendar options, including a link to the calendar option survey. The two school calendar options consisted of the following. Option one, the start date was Monday, August 3rd, and option two, the start date would be Thursday, August 6th. The option one calendar was the preferred calendar and includes the following. Monday, August 3rd is the first day of school, a four-week off for fall break, a four-week off for Thanksgiving break, two weeks for the winter holiday break, a midwinter break that is three days and wraps around the weekend. So, you would have Friday off, Monday, which is President's Day, and Tuesday, and a week for spring break. All midwinter break days, all three, are designated as inclement weather makeup days. This board item relates to strategic goal area one, student achievement and success, and strategic goal area four, organizational and operational effectiveness. And you have the proposed Newton County 2020-2021 school calendar for your review. And that concludes item A.
Any questions for Dr. Thomas?
I have one.
Okay, go ahead.
On option one, it says we've got one full week for fall break. What has been the feedback on that? Because I know we used to- Because I know we used to just have, I think it was a long weekend. Does it explain to me why we went to that full, full week and why we couldn't go back down to just a long weekend?
I think we've always had the October break, as long as I can remember.
As a full week.
It's been a full week. Yeah.
I guess I'm thinking back to when I was in school.
It was Thanksgiving. We didn't have a full week.
Full week, maybe.
We had a couple of days for Thanksgiving, and we got a whole bunch of emails every year. So that got changed to a full week.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it was Thanksgiving. All right, Item B.
Item B. The superintendent recommends the approval of membership in the Advanced Ed Improvement Network. The total cost is $28,800. Rationale: The Advanced Ed Improvement Network is a community of over 36,000 schools and school systems around the globe. All members of the Advanced Ed Improvement Network receive exclusive access to the Advanced Ed Continuous Improvement System regardless of whether institutions, regardless of where institutions are in their improvement journey. This data-informed framework helps institutions plan and navigate a successful journey that is customized to their specific needs. Using the Advanced Ed Continuous Improvement System, members receive access to the research-based continuous improvement framework with proven processes and protocols. They also have access to resources aligned with the Advanced Ed Performance Standards and school system quality factors. The third item that, with this membership, you would have access to the E-Prove site, which is an integral set of tools to help you observe students in the learning environment, gather and analyze stakeholder feedback, diagnose areas of need, and ultimately identify and implement evidence-based strategies and plan for improvement. We also will receive three professional training licenses using the Effective Learning Environment Observational Tool, which is the Elliot, and we will receive a quarterly online publication, which is the Source. And this gives us new and updated information and opinions and best practices in education. This board item is aligned to all four strategic goal areas. It will be funded by FY '20 General Funds, Function 2210, Object 810. This concludes Item B.
Any questions on B? Thank you, Dr. Thomas. C, Dr. Barr?
In Item C, the superintendent recommends the identified items be declared surplus and disposed of per board policy, and those items are there for your review. That is Item C, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Barr on the surplus items? Thank you, Mr. Garrett.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, Madam Superintendent, members of the board. Item D for your consideration tonight. The superintendent recommends the approval of an application for capital outlay funding for FY 2021 from the Georgia Department of Education. In March 2018, the Board of Education approved a local facilities plan for the effective period July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2022. Included in that plan are a number of facility improvement projects identified as priorities. A request for state capital outlay funding for the following projects has been developed by the Facilities Department and reviewed by the Georgia Department of Education. A summary of the projects for which funding is requested is tabulated below. Middle Ridge Elementary School Roof Replacement, West Newton Elementary School Roof Replacement, Indian Creek Middle School Replace HVAC. The amount requested in state capital outlay, the estimated local match and estimated total project cost are tabulated there. The total between the three projects for requested state capital outlay is 2.1 million, just over 2.1 million dollars. Estimated local match from SPOSS is just over 1.4 million for a total of $3,575,673 estimated. Once approved, the executed application will be submitted to the Georgia Department of Education for final approval. Subsequently, the project will be advertised for bid and presented back to this board for contract award, and we're anticipating that happening about a year from now.
Any questions for Mr. Garrett? Thank you, Mr. Garrett. Dr. Jordan, E.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. The superintendent recommends that the Department of Testing, Research and Accountability contract with the Georgia Center for Assessment to implement the use of assesslets, which are designed to closely monitor student mastery of standards. As part of this contract, GCA will provide professional learning sessions in the areas of English Language Arts and Mathematics. The purchase amount is $236,000. After monitoring and reviewing student performance data and administrator-teacher feedback, the elementary and secondary curriculum teams determine there is a need to partner with GCA to strategically use assesslets and professional learning sessions to address specific domain areas. ELA and Mathematics assesslets are comprised of valid and reliable items aligned to the Georgia Standards of Excellence. The Georgia Center for Assessment at the University of Georgia will score all written responses provided by students. Following the administration of assesslets, GCA will provide professional learning sessions to address those specific domain areas. This is associated with strategic goal area number one, Student Achievement and Success. This expense will be paid with budgeted FY '20 General Funds from Function 1000, Object 610, in the elementary and secondary departments' budgets.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Jordan. This requires action tonight, so I need a motion to move with four before questions.
Sure.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved in second. The floor is open for questions and discussion.
You kept saying this word, assesslets.
Mm-hmm.
Say it again. No. What is the difference in assesslets and assessments?
That's their terminology, and it's also, you could think of it as a curriculum check.
So a test?
Not necessarily, because the structure and the intent and the purpose of this is completely different than what we've been accustomed to in the past. For example, benchmark assessments and, oh, that word from long ago, SLOs, that we want to forget about, all of that. The intent and purpose of this is to strategically identify those domain areas and then administer these curriculum checks, and then once administered and scored, for example, ELA, the written responses, once scored by GCA, who also scores some of the Georgia milestones, they will then pull together sample student work, use that in the PL sessions, and then we will come back. The teachers will have those PL sessions, review that data, and students will then have the opportunity to revise those drafts and rewrite and provide a second final copy, if you will. So the purpose is unlike anything we've done before. There are other districts in the state that have implemented this type of plan and have been very successful and realized gains in student achievement.
Any other questions? I do have, oh, go ahead, Mr. Jordan.
I don't have a question because I'll be upfront. I don't understand the process here.
Okay.
I don't understand it. That's why I don't have a question. And do we have anything similar, I heard what you just said, similar to this in the system now?
In the district right now?
Yes.
No, sir, we do not.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I have a question, Dr. Jordan, under the rationale.
Yes.
You said monitoring and reviewing teacher administrator and teacher feedback. So that came from all administrators at the elementary and secondary level?
Yes.
That's why they're all.
Yes.
Okay. So it could have been a team or a committee, like the calendar committee now.
Exactly.
Okay. So, and then, then my other question is, actually, it was about the elementary and secondary curriculum teams. So this is information that they have already seen used in other districts. When you said you looked at other districts and saw gains, so you provided that information to the teams of those districts that are using it with those gains?
Well, GCA has provided that information, as well as some of the principals that are sitting in the room tonight have talked to their colleagues in other districts who've implemented this type of plan, and they've received that same information. And I would like to say thank you to the principals because they are all in full support of this plan. And we have had schools that have actually, this last year, administered some of these assesslets on their own, and they saw significant gains.
Mansfield was one. He, when he arrived home, he called, but when he got home, his water was off, and not for lack of payment. But his water, and he's trying, he's trying to figure out, he's trying to find out what's going on. But also too, Dr. Gammons is prepared to say a few words as well. She wrote, I don't read all at night. But this is really no different from an item that you approved during the last school year, because we did, they did do the summative curriculum checks for us last year as well, but we only use those in the elementary and middle schools. This year, we are bringing the high schools on, and we're paying particular attention to the writing. As we analyze the data from the milestones, you know, the students have to do constructed response questions where they're actually having to write. And so we analyzed the data, both teams did, and we saw some stark deficits. And what this is allowing us to do, and that's why we prefer to call them curriculum checks, because as we go through the school year, it is our hope then to use these to gauge how the students are coming along through the, on the writing portion of the curriculum. So this is a mechanism for us to do that so that we can go back and retool. The professional learning piece is huge, because again, as Dr. Jordan said, they will design the professional learning based on the student's performance, you know, in individual schools. So teachers will have that, and then they can always go back and refresh and look back, and they're going to focus particularly in ELA on the three genres of writing that the students will be assessed on the milestones. So it's not an additional test. This is just a way for us to measure as we go through the year, their progression, you know, on the, as they go through the curriculum. But Dr. Gammons?
You said the magic word for me was not another, you said the magic word for me, phrase is not another test, because assesslet sounds like assessment, which sounds like test, like fancy words for test.
Well, we've had GCA out to our school already twice. The first time, they worked with our new teachers, new to the school, on how to get students to perform better. Then they came out and they worked with planning with our teachers, how to plan, how to implement this. And they'll be out tomorrow to co-teach with my teachers on lesson plans that they've written. I think probably the most powerful thing I have to say is from one of my fifth grade teachers. She sent me this in an email. Kevin from GCA has helped fifth grade a great deal. We've learned actually to deconstruct the text based on what question is being asked or the prompt for writing. Teaching the kids to create a participant process circumstance organizer helps them to deconstruct the text while gathering evidence to cite within their writing, and that's a severe weakness for our kids. They do not know how to effectively read the material and know what to pick out to cite, and this is what it really hits. It helps them in building knowledge fluency and the text allow deconstruction, note-taking, summarizing the text and writing to show comprehension. Not only did he teach us through modeling, but we were able to work throughout all of the steps for true understanding before teaching it within our class. We feel we have a better starting point at being able to ask the questions. So he came out, the gentleman we had from there came out, he explained the writing process and the process that will make it students, it click with students. Our students have to read at least one, maybe two passages, and then write a narrative about that. And this is a procedure, a method for how to teach the children to analyze the very important parts, what's kind of extra, I'm not used to that, what's kind of extra and what's really important. And it's a very organized way. In fact, we just create, our teachers are so excited in the math, and I'll be showing this to Ms. Fury later this week, that they created a template to help the students deconstruct what's important in solving word problems. You know, we have, in third through fifth grade, we have, they're not traditional word problems like you did, you know. You got how much carpet is going to be needed for this square room? It's multi-step problems where they have to know what to do first, second, and extraneous information is given. They've, this process helps the students to learn to organize the information in a way that they can solve the complex problems. And we, I have my instructional coach with me, Ms. McGowan, if you wanted to ask more questions. But we, our school leadership teams, after looking at our data, said we have to have this. So we jumped on the boat ahead, and we plan on keep riding the boat right on along with some more of this. But if you'd like, I'll answer any questions you can have.
This is all data-driven.
Absolutely.
This is something that we just decided that we want to spend $200,000 on, but it is all data-driven. But, and again, I'm going to say this in front of the principals, because I said it to them at their meetings. The only meeting I did not attend last week was the middle school meeting, but I went to the secondary meeting and the elementary meeting, and I said to them, now, do you, do you all want us to go before the board and ask for this? Because it's not going to work if they do not get the data back and use it in POC, and then the teachers use it as they're going through the rest of the curriculum. And they gave us an assurance that that is exactly what they're going to do. This is not going to solve all of the problems, but it will give, it will make a big dent in it, because again, when we look at the data as it relates to the students writing on this past administration of the milestones, we've got to do something. And we felt that this was one of the best ways to do it, to work with the University of Georgia's team, who are, who are, who have developed, you know, everything that we'll need. And so because of that, we asked as a show of solidarity, so that you all would know that this isn't something we're pushing down their throat, this is something that they want. So we asked them to come as a show of support, that this is something that they want this way.
I want to say just a word, if I could, about the assesslets. We took and purchased through Title Funds assesslets. And what was so important and valuable for us is we got the material back, we looked at what our kids did, and it helped us to figure out what they did not know. Hey, we taught this, they should know it. But it helped the teachers to sit down in their PLCs with the coach, to go through it and see, all right, what are the mistakes? What did the kids not get from when we learned? And what can we do to help them write better? It was implemented in our fourth grade, and our scores went up. That's all I can say. Thank, do you have any other questions?
Any questions?
Yeah, probably to the academic chief there.
Oh, God.
What process, processes would you have in place that would tell this board that the X number of dollars spent here is beneficial, and I'm saying that based on the information that I've given, gathered? So when would that take place?
Well, we will go through the school year, and hopefully, we will see an increase in student performance at the milestone. So we will not have the data for that until probably this time next year, based on when they send the, you know, the reports out. We'll have them before now, but we would, of course, need the time to go and analyze to see. But throughout the year, Dr. Mosley and Dr. Warfield will be, along with their teams, will be charged with monitoring the implementation of this entire process, and then they'll be working through, you know, any kinks that they see as we go through this. And as I said, you know, this is, it won't solve all of, you know, of the concerns that we've seen with the student performance, but it will help us to begin to get some traction, I believe, because teachers just need some assistance in helping. traction, I believe, because teachers um just need some assistance um in, in helping to us, uh, to monitor how the children are progressing um with the writing standards. So to answer your question, again, we, we will not have any information until we get the results back from, you know, from the milestones, because that's what we use to make the determination that this is what we need.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Yeah, just a quick one. Um, first of all, thank you guys for coming out. If, and if this is something that y'all think is beneficial and will work, and, and our teachers are all for it, I mean, it sounds like a great thing. Uh, now, it's for board action tonight, so are we implementing this tomorrow?
Well, no, she's gotta have time to work with um, with Dr. Warfield and Dr. Mosley to get the, the standards and all that up, within, you can explain the, I'm just the one that kind of makes it happen. They're the one that do the grunt work, so I'm gonna sit out and plug it in.
Um, these assesslets, they are already there, and if you approve this tonight, then I will work with Dr. Mosley, Dr. Warfield, and we will go through, look at the curriculum maps, determine when we need to have the first administration of the first assesslet. However, we need to strategically identify those domain areas. We also still need the input of the principals in this room. So this is a collective effort. It's not something that the three of us are just sitting there saying, okay, these are, this is what we're going to do. Um, they already have in the curriculum maps, um, when certain things will take place if approved tonight. So we've already been proactive in planning as much as we possibly could, and then um we are ready to begin um doing what we need to do to take the next step, should you approve it tonight.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, I want to thank you, Dr. Jordan, and Mr. Roundtree, all being so thorough, um, and Dr. Gammons on presenting as well. I guess you guys had a secret conversation about us and said we're gonna be ready for them tonight. So we're gonna bring everybody out. So you have learned us well, so we do appreciate it.
Thank you.
With that being said, I'm gonna call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five-zero, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, principals, for, for coming in to help the board um make a, a decision that um respects your wishes. So it's really important that we all work together, and your presence here tonight speaks to the hard work that we um, we do together as a team to try to move our students forward. So thank you very much for being here.
Can I ask a minute, comment?
Yes, sir.
I personally appreciate the administrators coming out. It reinforces to me that you want something, and on a principal note, if you want something, you come out and fight for it, so to speak. And that's very impressive to me. And I'll be perfectly honest with you, by seeing you there, helped me make the decisions and say yes. So I'm just suggesting to you a, a, a method to get your message across. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Okay, so Abigail has already made the motion earlier for us to go into executive session for item F. So we're going to executive session for personnel.
Motion. Sanders.
Yes, may I have a motion?
So.
Okay, move in second, all in favor?